Good morning, good morning. It's Tuesday, March 5th, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I move to approve minutes of the February 27th meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing now on roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes. All right. We -- any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Okay. Yes, Kimberly, if you want to come forward, please.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, do I have to state my name for the record?
Please, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. So Kimberly Marshall with the City of Medina Economic Development, and the address is 132 North Elmwood. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the land bank public hearing and the city's support. Obviously, we've had the one site that's been blighted for quite some time, which is the Yosonoco site at 426 West Liberty Street. And so that, in my opinion, would be the key site for land bank. However, I think, Commissioner, as you're aware, we recently applied through that Ohio Department of Development through County Port Authority for the environmental assessment program. So our only concern about forming the land bank would be slowing down that process. We would like to maybe do both of these tasks in parallel with each other, because I'm not really sure how long it will take to set up the land bank. There's obviously a lot of legal paperwork and forming a board and getting your organization meeting set up. So our city council has supported the applying for the grant and the matching dollars for the grant for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments. So just wanted to put that out there. We're in favor of the land bank, but we don't want to slow down this other process. So we appreciate your time.
Thank you. I think we had the conversation prior to the meeting and with other entities as well. The intention is not to slow down, obviously, that process. You are following, at this point, the only -- what you require is access. And as I understand, and I know Mike Lyons is here, you've had the conversations with the auditor's office as well as City of Medina, that the auditor is acting as an agent of the state can grant access for the purpose of testing, in which case it doesn't require land bank activity whatsoever. And I think it's best that the City of Medina proceed. You've set aside $100,000 for moving forward. The land bank won't have any resources, won't be able to have any of that capability, and wouldn't even assume leadership -- or, excuse me, ownership until it's actually formed and code of regulations, and that's sometime. So I think your plan and your intent is to go ahead and proceed through the -- our Economic Development Port Authority for the access to state grants for the -- conduct the necessary testing. So I think it's best to proceed that direction regardless of what we do with the land bank.
And obviously, if there are other properties that are going to benefit from the land bank, particularly because of the coming home monies and the different grant funding and stuff out there, if there's other properties that can benefit and can be moved forward that aren't necessarily in the city, you know, if the county does good, then the city will do well. So.
Indeed. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. We also have Representative Sharon Ray. I believe you wanted to say a couple of comments regarding our resolutions.
Well, I just came for the land bank hearing, I'll let you know. And I am just so excited and so pleased to see this finally move forward. I know this has been the result of a lot of work from the Board and the Treasurer and everyone, and I just think it opens up the county to so many more possibilities to use these blighted properties, and I commend all the hard work you've done, and I'm really excited to see this move forward. So thank you.
I want to thank you for your support in the legislature for the welcome home Ohio dollars that we're hoping to be able to acquire for those purposes of not only helping support the land bank but other housing initiatives within the county. So thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to -- regarding public comment on our pending resolutions? If not, we're going to proceed. We've got the County Engineers Office, Dan Becker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got four resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is the necessity to close Ridgewood Road for roadside construction. The second resolution is the necessity to close Ridgewood Road between Graven Way and Ridgewood -- or in Ridge Road, I'm sorry. And those two closures are going to happen at different times, so just so you're aware. The third one is finding for public convenience and welfare for the replacement of Bridge Number 26 on Ridgewood Road. And the last one is the finding of public convenience and welfare requiring the replacement of Bridge Number 2 on Wolf Road.
I move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Big week for Ridgewood Road.
Yeah, don't live there.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to request statement of qualifications for professional design services to assist in the management of the industrial pretreatment program. The second is declaring the necessity to rehabilitate existing sanitary sewer mains in various locations within Medina County and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for construction bids.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes. All right, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Holly Muir, our human resources director. Good morning.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in maintenance and one in sanitary, six rate increases, two in sanitary, one in maintenance, two at office for older adults, and one at IT, one transfer between agencies from the county home, one return from leave and transit, one appointment change at Job and Family Services, and one change in resignation at Job and Family Services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brett Thomas, our finance director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have 11 resolutions for you guys today. We're back at it. We start with a transfer of appropriations. The majority of this is actually a reorganization for solid waste to make it a little bit easier for them to do their EPA reporting. Our second resolution is cash transfer for the amount that was committed for the emergency management agency, so we have $80,000 moving to them as per our budget. Our third resolution is cash transfers for various funds. This is actually a reimbursement to the general fund for the cost of our CHIP grant application. Our fourth resolution is the transfer to the vehicle maintenance revenue for October, November, and December of '23 in the total of $60,375. Our fifth resolution is authorizing the -- it's really an update to the credit card authorization for the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. They have updated their credit -- or their credit card policy to reflect the recent House bills, and so we are acknowledging that. Our sixth resolution is the funding of the delinquent care and reclaim grant. The Juvenile Court had an amendment to this grant. We've already passed through the original grant. It's just kind of re-appropriating line items for them. Our seventh resolution is the purchase of 7,100 gallons of gas, and our friends at Ports Petroleum have come in at the lowest price again at $2.26.7 cents per gallon. Our eighth resolution, which is a whole long one, is excess property declarations. Most of this is from Board of Developmental Disabilities again, and then Sanitaries Liverpool Ninth resolution is expenses for travel for adult probation. This is over to Logan, Ohio. And our 10th one is a long list of various travel expenses. We have the Treasurer's last little bit for his conference in Savannah, Georgia, and as well the Sheriff has a rather large one for training for the Jail Association in Fort Lauderdale, Florida for our out-of-states. And finally, last but not least, our weekly bills in the amount of $1,678,920.21.
Move to approve the 11 resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just have one comment. I didn't catch it first time around on yesterday. Number five says seconded by Mr. Hudson, so I think we have to take that out of the computer yet.
Yep, we'll get that. Our templates are sometimes pulled from various places. Sorry about that.
We could make a phone call, but I don't think it's --
Yeah, I don't know that he really wants to, so.
Okay, what that amendment?
My apologies on that.
I corrected it on the final.
Okay. Moved in second. Roll call.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes. All right. Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two resolutions this morning for you. The first is an event I know we've all been looking forward to, authorizing a public auction to be held for the sale of unneeded and obsolete personal property currently located within the Medina County Courthouse complex. We have a date scheduled with an auctioneer. The public auction would be held Saturday morning, April 27th, at 9:00 a.m., beginning at 9:00 a.m., and will be held at the courthouse facility. And the second and final resolution this morning is adoption of an employee bonus policy. This would authorize a bonus policy consistent with Ohio Revised Code Section 32425, which effectively would limit and provide for infrequent and otherwise consistent employee performance bonuses as deemed appropriate by elected officials.
Move to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
I believe there needs to be -- there's a typo in terms of the Ohio Revised Code section that's referenced.
32525. I apologize.
Yes, yeah, okay. So we'll make that typo change. Moved in second. Any discussion or comments?
Just to clarify, I know we talked about that last week, and we sent a letter last week about that, but I mean, the intention, I think, with the bonus policy is to maintain, you know, consistent with public employment, that an acknowledgement that we have very dedicated and committed employees, talented group of employees, but that when we're working with public funds, that, you know, the use of bonuses should be somewhat infrequent and then should also be consistent across the government. So adopting a policy that's consistent with already existing state law, I think accomplishes that and maybe just amplifies the position that hadn't previously been stated. So I'm in full support of that measure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, obviously, it is meant to recognize outstanding employment performance as part of a program, and also that section of the code very clearly indicates some essential elements. One, that there's sufficient revenues. Number two, that certainly the commissioners are informed, and that such program does not always have to involve cash. In other words, employee performance can also be recognized with a day off with pay. So there's no additional funds necessary just as to recognize that employee performance. And that is consistent with how the commissioners have tried to operate, and we're making sure that any of those we appropriate money for, that we have those policies that align with those conditions. And secondly, I'll point out that the courthouse complex, this is historic, I don't think there's ever been an auction within the courthouse itself. The content's being removed. So if you're here April 27th, maybe get a good deal, and you could take a little piece of history and take it home with you. I'm not sure it's market value, but I guess that's what the auction is all about.
There's some special items for sure.
There you go.
Kimberly, are there any events going on in the square that day that will help us bump up attendance there?
Farmer's Market.
Oh, the Farmer's Market.
That's kind of early for Farmer's Market.
Won't it start by April?
Nope.
27th? Oh, that's not till May? Oh, I'm sorry. I should have asked you, I should have looked at you immediately. Sorry.
No offense.
Okay, so this will be a warm-up, too. So there's no competition, then?
Maybe a sneak preview weekend for the Farmer's Market?
Do we do a sneak preview, or is it just open that day?
It's open that day.
Open that day, okay.
But they'll be listing?
They'll be having an itemized list of sorts and some photographs.
Got it.
Super. That'd be great. Go to bed.
It'll be something.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick. Yes. Hambley.
Yes.
Thanks very much.
All right. We have apartment updates, department updates. Laura Toth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have to go before Denise. I wanted to pass out our annual report to you for 2023, and then I'm just going to talk about a couple pages in there. We prepare an annual report per our grant guidelines from Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. I must say, since the hire of a media person, our annual reports look awesome. When I did them, they were a few tight lines and things like that. So they're very nice and highlight some of the events that we do throughout the year. If you look at pages four and five, kind of the middle section, I don't talk about these numbers a lot, but I wanted to highlight some numbers on the left side under Support Services. Last year, we had 1,094 specialized information and assistance calls. That's more than just a call to the office. That's a call where somebody's seeking out help, social services of some kind, so we're working specifically with them, giving them referrals or getting information so we can connect them to the right service. Also in that same department, they do benefits counseling, and last year we provided 553 and 1/4 hours of benefits counseling. We also have a short-term case management, that's a different set of workers, but we provided 172 and 1/2 hours of short-term case management. It's called long -- it's so weird. Short-term case management is called long-term options counseling, that's the name for it, but it's actually like a 60 to 90-day. The director starts to get going. If it gets more than like 120-day, come on, we got to wind this up, but they do a really good job. And then in our second full year of Adult Protective Services, on the top of page five, we received 495 calls. Those calls go to Job and Family Services, and then our team makes the decision whether to open those cases or not. 212 of those cases were opened. That's an open rate of about 41%, 42% of the calls coming in that we're opening. If not, we're referring them to services, or there are concerns about the adult is in a safe environment at the time of the call. Those are the typical reasons. And one more thing on the back cover, talking about our social activities. We do a variety of day trips. We had 712 seniors participate in day trips in 2023. We had 1,385 seniors participate in our large group activities in the Medina area. That does include Senior Day, which was about 600 people. And then up in Brunswick, we had 764 large group participants. So that's just a brief thing of other programs that I don't typically cover here, but I wanted you guys to take a look at. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. We have filled all of the available tax appointments on behalf of the AARP. So the AARP gets the space, and they're at the Medina Library this year, and so they reserve all the rooms, and then we take on the responsibility of scheduling seniors for tax appointments. If any Medina County senior residents continue to need referrals to other tax agencies, we'd be happy to help them. The last I heard, there were still some open, free availability as a United Way VITA program, so that might be a possibility. But we also have agencies in the county that will do discounts for taxes for seniors. It's really a popular program, and it fills up really quick. So I encourage people to always call early once they get scheduled. Not going to help for 2023, but at least we can hopefully get people connected to the services they need. We had a very successful open house last Thursday, February 29th, thanks for attending. Coming up, we have our St. Patrick's Day parties on the 15th of March in Wadsworth and at the Medina Center. We also have our very large Brunswick Senior Expo that is Wednesday, March 27th. I know the commissioners have a booth there. I hope to see you all there. That's from 9:30 to 12:00. So we're looking forward to a great event, and lots of baked goods, because it's kind of a bake-off, and that event is free of charge at the Brunswick Recreation Center. I wanted to let the Board know that I am in the process of applying for a couple of grants to see if we could get a little bit of assistance with costs. One is for assistance with food costs for the voucher program at Suprema Senior Center. And then I'm applying to for a state capital grant to hopefully help out with the purchase of a building generator that we need at 246 Northland. So we'll see how that goes.
Well, she's right there.
I've mentioned the tour a couple of times. Get the rest of the team on board.
Yeah, okay.
And I want to just shout out to Assistant Administrator Matt Springer. He went out on a home-delivered meal route last Friday, got to experience that, and it really is quite the experience. We appreciate his involvement, and he was very complimentary on the work we do, so that was very nice. Thanks so much.
It is fun activity. We've done that, I know, in the past.
Yeah.
Kind of need to do. Just want to also publicly thank you for your continued work with the Liberty residents. I know you're still fielding calls and working with the seniors to help them find either the community resources needed for them to stay in place or to find an appropriate other location. So I just want to thank you for working through that issue with those individuals and their families.
Yeah. I really think it's exciting news to talk about things like a land grant for future needs in Fort Belvee. I think it's going in the right direction, so that's encouraging as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Denise Testor, our planning services director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So tomorrow night is our planning commission meeting. We will review two text amendments for our April meeting. Right now, we have one subdivision that we might be reviewing. However, that subdivision has been postponed each month since December, and I believe that that will probably follow that pattern as well, moving into the community development block grants, as well as the PY-22 critical infrastructure, the Lodi Bridge and the Lodi Community Park, which is a critical infrastructure and state money. So it is unrecognizable. Rob Henwood, our senior planner, visited it this morning due to the good weather, and it is unrecognizable. It is just an amazing project. They've cleared it out. It looks like we're not going to have anyone become stranded again. The Lodi pathway, so this is PY-22 CDBG. We are planning to rebid for our pathway because we are waiting for Lodi to obtain, hopefully, a future bid for their splash pad. So the pathway leads to the splash pad, and they are coming from two separate funding sources, so one has to occur with the other. So we'll be submitting that. For PY-24 CDBG, for those that are interested, our first public hearing is scheduled for Monday, March 11th, at 2:30. For those who would like to attend here in the County Administration Building, balcony room B. For those organizations and agencies and individuals who are interested in submitting an application, the application deadline is May 3rd at 4:00 p.m., I believe. Moving on to fair housing, so April is Fair Housing Awareness Month, and we will -- we are hosting a Fair Housing Awareness Day on Friday, April 19th, between 9:00 and 11:30 at Medina County Board of Development Disabilities on Windfall Road. That is open to the public. I hope that you're able to attend. And Vera Boggs from the Ohio Civil Rights Commission is our keynote speaker, and we have some other activities planned as well to be determined. I will present some fair housing presentations to the Salvation Army and the, I believe it's called the Breakfast Club of Kewanis, so I'll be getting up early that morning. And then I've also submitted a fair housing proposal to provide services to the City of Medina to continue that partnership. And Operation Homes has invited me to attend a brainstorming meeting to kind of review their goals and missions and objectives moving forward. Regarding the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, also known as CHIP, those applications, as announced last week, are available. That is a home rehab and home repair program, new for 2023. Mobile homes are eligible to apply. And the limit for rehab is 70 -- up to $75,000. The limit for repair is $22,000. This is a partnership with the City of Wadsworth. And moving forward to our educational workshops, so we completed our first educational workshop on January 18th. I presented Part 2 to Sharon Township last week. I think they asked me because the Price is Right. That was our zoning board basics presentation. Moving forward, on March 18th, we are hosting a comprehensive planning session at Medina County University Center, and moving forward, all of our workshops are being held at MCUC. We have four additional. And then on April 1st, and this is no joke, Montville Township is hosting a BZA or a Board of Zoning Appeals workshop from 6:30 to 8:30, and for those who are interested, I strongly recommend that you contact Montville Township. Any questions?
Nope. Very good. You're very active.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Kyle White, OSU Extension.
I'm going to pass out some handouts here. Well, and I have a guest with me, Angela Mansier from Main Street Medina. But first, I wanted to say a few words about the programming going on with Ohio State Extension in Medina County. Again, my name is Kyle White. I'm a community development educator for the Ohio State University Office of Extension. Two of my colleagues here with me today, Erin Ruggero and Sierra Baca. Erin is our family and consumer sciences educator, and she wanted us to report that she is going -- she's launching the Strong Couples Project, and that is a free online education program. So I guess you call it coaching in some ways for couples, and it will be on our website and on our Facebook page. For anyone who's interested, please take a look. This week is 4-H week. Every evening is an extravaganza of events, so anybody who would like to come, please come and join Sierra and the rest of the team. Our ag and natural resources educator wanted to report that we are hosting a Home Farm Series to answer questions for people who might be interested in starting a farm. So we begin March 14th. Take a look at our website, medina.osu.edu, and I passed out a flyer for you there. And we have completed our Medina pesticide recertification course. Our master gardeners are starting a new series of service learning days, and they are going to be working with the parks to remove invasive garlic mustard from sensitive habitats. So if you're interested, take a look on Medina Parks' website. And today, I'm going to be talking a little bit about some of the programming for community development as well. I just handed out a flyer to you, to you commissioners and Rhonda, talking about our solar program. We are -- we have completed the installation of solar panels that we received due to a grant, and thank you to the commissioners for allowing us to use the building and add solar panels. We will be teaching four lunch-and-learn classes, two in April and two in May, and there's an entire schedule, an agenda, that will be on our website, and we will be publicizing it through various other means, so please keep your eyes open for that. It will be in the commissioners' newsletter as well. And today, I'm with Angela Mansier, okay, from Main Street Medina County, and we're happy to announce that Cuyahoga County Extension and Medina County Extension were able to partner to bring funding, $7,000 worth of funds for TANF-eligible families. It would be 50 booklets, $140 each, for use at the farmer's market to receive fresh produce. So Angela, you want to talk a little bit about that program?
Sure. We're very excited about this. We were actually approached by Cuyahoga Produce Perks Department, and usually TANF funds, which stands for Temporary Assistance for Needied Families, is given more in the urban areas, and surprising or not, Medina is still considered a rural county, and so they wanted to pilot giving out TANF funds to three rural counties in Ohio, and we were approached --
And we were approached, and we were one of them. And so we will be starting out this May, the very first farmer's market, May 18th. Anybody can come. They don't have to be a Medina County resident or a city resident, but they can come. And it's what's really exciting about the TANF program is people up until last year were still undergoing the COVID dollars for SNAP, and then that was taken away. And so a lot of families lost all their food insecurity programming money. And so the TANF, because their requirements and their criteria is not as stringent, some of these families will get some of the funding back. So it's really twofold. It definitely gets money in the hands of people who are needing it. The cost of everything is going up, but it also will help them be able to bring fresh and healthy products back to their families. And then on the other side of it, this $7,000 will go right into the farmers' pockets. We will have nine vendors who will be there to be able to sell products to them, because these funds can only be used on fresh fruits and vegetables or herbs. So it's kind of good all around financially, but then also health-wise, we can really try and educate. And then with other programming I'm doing with the farmer's market, trying to get them cooking and how-to classes on what to do with it. We're putting these foods in your hands, take them home, and let's let's figure out a way to help you enjoy it. So it's a great partnership. I'm glad Kyle brought us into it, because I think we'll, you know, really be able to make a difference here in the county and and just really, you know, kind of put Medina on the map when it comes to really wanting to address the food insecurity issues that we do have here in Medina and the county as well.
How do people get the booklets?
Yeah, so we're going to have volunteers. We're going to be staffing a tent, and they'll be able to sign up on that day. The the only requirement is you need to be a U.S. citizen, and then you also need to have a child in your home. Doesn't necessarily have to be your child. It could be a grandchild or somebody who's being fostered, but again, it is to serve families. So they will be filling out something on an iPad, and then they will get the booklet right then and there, and then they will have some time to, I think it's up to six weeks to spend that money at our market.
Any questions?
Do you have any idea, and I hate to put you on the spot, how many local farmers actually are selling produce on a regular basis? I know based upon, you know, what's going on in their field, what they have available, and I know kind of some come and then.
Well, I do I can just speak for our market, the one that's here in the square.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we have nine full-time vendors who are there every single week, and most of, I think almost all nine of them have two stalls because they have so much produce.
Right.
So and what's neat is you can keep coming week after week, and those tables just kind of start looking a little different as our Northeast Ohio permits. So so it's definitely something, you know, and I always encourage the farmer's market is definitely a family-friendly event and something just to come and enjoy the square, not just the market itself. So we're really proud of how we've grown the program. And this is also in tandem with the SNAP and produce perks. We still are getting that dollar-for-dollar match, up to 25 for the free produce perks that if you took your SNAP card into a grocery store or gas station, you don't get that match. So again, it's just something to benefit our families and then also our farmers.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners Resolution, we have the first one, reappointing Amanda Aboretto, Attorney at Law, to the Medina County Board of Building Appeals and Residential Board of Building Appeals.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. The next one is the Resolution Establishing the Medina County Land Reutilization Corporation for the County's Treasurers' Office in accordance with Ohio Vice Code Section 5722.02, proving initial articles of incorporation. This is the land bank discussion. John, did you want to come up and say a couple of things? John Burke, our County Treasurer, and thank you for all your work on this.
You're welcome. Happy to do it. Just a couple of things. So the resolution you have and the you have also the Articles of Incorporation. They're all complete. Mike Lyons and I reviewed the resolution had a few changes from the one that was previously passed back in 2019. And then we took a look at the Articles of Incorporation. We also obtained several articles from some of the larger land banks and well-established land banks and reviewed them. And so it was interesting. He reviewed a few. I reviewed a few different ones, and we both came up with the same changes. We we added those two. So those are complete. After you pass this resolution, I just want to go through a couple of the steps that we're going to have to take then. So we'll be setting up the board, and as you know by law, it's the two commissioners, the treasurer, the largest city and the largest township. But we can also add two more or four more for seven or nine. So we'll need to set up the board, but the other critical thing is the code of regulations or the bylaws. And we've also got a comprehensive ethics policy we'll have to put in place, conflict of interest policy. There's also rules for maintaining confidentiality of information received from third parties that deal with the land bank. So there's a number of things that have to be accomplished at that point. I plan to help take the lead on that. I've already started collecting and talking with several of the larger land banks, well-established land banks. I've got several of their articles, or their bylaws, and code of regulations, which I'm reviewing now, and I've got a couple of personal meetings set up in another week, because really what I'd like to do is get their best practices so we can get a quick start and do it right. So those are a couple of things that we'll have to do after after that. Okay?
Okay.
Any questions?
And we haven't had a chance to talk, but you heard the conversation from Medina. I said their concerns about derailing what is already going on.
Yeah, I kept up on that with them and the auditor, and so, yeah, they've already got that in place. Plus, we've already we already have designated a lot of the Brownfield money.
Oh, yeah, that's still that hasn't changed.
So they have their own, and that's it.
Yeah, okay.
I agree with that. Yeah.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. I guess we'll entertain.
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion from?
I do think it bears reiterating, because and I thank Kimberly for her contributions to the discussion, too. My reservation at the start of this was that the land bank might somehow impact the pacing of other projects. And and so I think it was Tom Morse from Wadsworth in our nine o'clock hearing said, you know, this is a tool to be, you know, to be wielded, but it isn't the be-all or the end-all. And so I appreciate Kimberly for bringing those concerns from the city to us, and I think as long as we're able to kind of keep progress moving on their project, we could demonstrate, too, that those two things can happen, you know, kind of collectively or concurrently. You know, as we've talked more about this, I think the target project for land bank operations are likely to be more, you know, housing residential-type projects where you wouldn't have another party step up. Here, where there's the city has has clearly demonstrated an interest to take the lead on that project down the road, I would hate for the for just even the discussion of the land bank to delay that any. So, you know, I think we're all going to kind of figure out the new rules of engagement in the world where this is an option we have, but I'm hopeful that it won't take it in any capacity hinder any of those things that are already in the works. So hopefully, this will be an example of that not happening, so.
Good. Yeah, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right, very good. All right, next, open to public comment. Anything from the public? All right, move forward. We'll go ahead and I guess get into discussion session. Chris?
Are we doing this one today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, we're going to just talk about it. We'll do it next week.
We're distributing some information for you to take a look at. This relates to the Lead Safe Ohio program that the Board of County Commissioners has previously agreed to move forward with. Medina County was awarded $802,000 through this program. The Board executed an agreement for this program in January. There's also an underlying, as part of this program, there's an underlying consulting agreement. In this case, it's with Kleinfelder is the name of the consulting group, and we've discovered a couple potential snags and obstacles with moving forward with this program. We wanted to make you aware of some of the issues that we've been discussing internally for the last several days and ask for your thoughts on how to proceed with the program. Basically, the draft agreement with the consulting firm calls for 13 units to be remediated at an estimated consulting cost of $12,500. That includes overseeing the project and the construction remediation and lining up the contractors for the work. There is in the draft agreement with Kleinfelder, there is a clause that states that if projects don't go forward, basically, the county is still on the hook, so to speak, for some of the administrative costs incurred by Kleinfelder. However, because those projects aren't going to move forward potentially, whether a homeowner decides at the very end, after going through the process, to withdraw from the program for whatever reason, or the project is deemed too expensive, there's a $50,000 cap, by the way, per project for this grant, we would be obligated to pay and reimburse Kleinfelder for their costs that had been incurred to date. We cannot bill those back against this grant program, however, so it means that there's some potential exposure at the county level for any of those projects that may, for whatever reason, not proceed, and Kleinfelder has put in some effort and worked in time. So we wanted to get your thoughts on how you'd like to proceed with this program. Denise and Matt and I have been meeting to discuss this over the last week or so, and Denise, I don't know if you have any additional comments?
Summarize it.
Okay.
And you said it can't be built back, so there's that general administration, technical assistance, marketing, it wouldn't qualify for that.
If the project didn't move forward.
Okay.
Right. So we have certain deadlines, too, which are upcoming in terms of.
The project being an individual household?
An individual remediation project, whether that's a residence or, in this case, I think we submitted potentially 13 residences to be impacted and by this grant.
Have we identified those 13?
We have not.
So in other words, ultimately, when you get the pool of candidates that are eligible and so forth, if it's more than 13, it's just like the first 13 get them, or are they ranked?
We have not worked out those details yet.
Okay, all right.
Are we what is the threshold? How many of those would need to be funded for us to to not have exposure? Would all of those 13 have to go forward?
Well, we could get through five of them, and then the sixth hits a snag for whatever reason. Kleinfelder would send us a bill for their cost incurred. We can't bill it back against the grant, and therefore, we need to identify potentially another source of revenue to pay for those expenses incurred.
So there's no it's it's an all or not. We either hit the threshold.
Right. We either move forward with the individual project or we don't.
If we expended some of them lockdown in 2024, and we needed to pay Kleinfelder, could ARPA be used for that?
Sure. As long as those monies are still available, yes.
My thought would be perhaps we go back to Kleinfelder and suggest that we may not be inclined to move forward on those terms because of the exposure.
Right.
And see if we can get a better liquidated damages or whatever the terminology is.
A reduction for their true administrative costs, basically.
Yeah.
Because if they're not doing anything, doesn't make sense that we get the full $12,500.
If they're not doing the full extent of the service.
Exactly, especially if construction services oversight of the of the project and so on.
So we did we made a note at the bottom of that first page that maybe there's an option, and not that that $4,500 is a magic number, but maybe there's a way to amend the draft to limit our financial exposure for those projects that may not go forward. And we're not certain that that'll occur.
Right.
But we just wanted to alert you to the fact that it is possible, and we've not identified another source of revenue to pay those costs.
And we could we could do that and still have time to meet the 75% obligation deadline?
We're hopeful.
Do you mind if I?
No, please.
Sure, please.
So with the Kleinfelder issue, we could put a cap per project if we wanted, so that's that's one option. Most of the administrative costs that are incur occur at the front end of a project, because that's essentially when they're vetting the site, they're determining whether or not it's appropriate for the project for the program. Potentially, we could receive no bids for that project. So again, you know, as we're moving forward, I guess it would be our recommendation just to have an overall cap, not necessarily per project, but if there's a dollar amount that you're interested in in setting, then once that dollar amount is reached, then any monies that is not used as part of that grant would be clawed back by the state. I mean, that's that's one way to, you know, think about it, Chris. I don't know if I it's one option, but.
So it's something that's the alternative to the 162, basically, yeah?
Right. I mean, the 162 is, you know, again, those are for 13 projects, essentially, but I don't know. I don't know if that's.
Is there any question that we're not going to have at least 13?
We could have.
Projects completed?
We could have 13 completed, but we could have incurred expenses for possibly 16 or 17.
Correct, yeah.
That's the that's.
Well, according to the construction timelines, contracts executed by this year, that falls under one ARPA, and then everything expended by '26, that that's the second ARPA requirement, right? The payouts by '26?
By the end of '26.
Yeah, so according to this timeline.
Right, and the challenge with this.
It would fall under ARPA.
This is ARPA funding, I mean, coming from.
The state.
But we have some left.
Right.
We do, on our our side, yes.
Right, so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 you can stay.
I would be in favor of proceeding of sitting down with Kleinfelder and see what you can negotiate, what would make sense, and then come back to us with another proposal.
I think I think having some kind of a predetermined cap of our exposure is really the missing link, because it's I mean, we can kind of quantify it now, but we don't know what the circumstances that would lead to that would be, so.
Right.
And obviously, it's not with sorry, with the with the with the group being served by this program, it's not something we can pass along to the participants, so it's going to be our obligation.
Correct. So we wanted to make sure you're aware of this potential issue, and should it arise, and maybe it doesn't. We also wanted to know if you wanted us to try to sit down and negotiate perhaps an agreement that would limit our exposure, should we have any. And then, thirdly, to make sure that you still wanted to move forward with this project and this grant program. It's $802,000.
Yeah.
Residents could benefit from it. It'd be a shame to turn it back.
Right.
Other counties, I believe, have declined to move forward with this program.
Because you think because of that financial liability of the.
Perhaps, perhaps.
But in a in a perfect world, we'd know how much we were going to use before we have to commit the, you know, the the cost. Obviously, we don't that's not.
Well, we know the max is 162, correct? Right now?
Yes, and we don't anticipate coming close to that in terms of our exposure. It's just those one or two projects that may, for whatever reason, not move forward, where we're stuck with no ability to to access the grant funds to to pay for the contract expenses.
Your cover sheet talks about owner-occupied residential, but the eligibility says also owner or renter occupied. Is that correct?
Yes.
It can be owner or renter occupied?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so these can be rental units as well. All right, that would qualify.
So if you're discussing the the cap, could that be variable based on the number of projects that actually do move forward, too?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can allow us the opportunity to meet with the consultant and come back to you with some potential draft language changes that I think protect us from certain exposure, that'd be great.
Right. I don't think the burden needs to be fully on them either, but something that's just but something that's just a little bit more blended where we're kind of both sharing that.
Correct.
Yep.
So for, I hate to belabor the question, but if it involves rental property, my presumption is still the household income is the one that governs as to whether the eligibility.
I believe so, yes.
So actually, this helps them, a lower economic scale, so forth. And frankly, is there a landlord around that would actually turn down, actually improving their unit to eliminate the lead pipes?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Well, and this project, too, allows us to not only repair the lead base, but also the supplemental measures. If there's a leaky roof onto a lead-based window, that can be repaired as well, as part of the LSO program.
Good.
I see Stan Chee's wheels turning on this one. So.
Okay.
So we'll.
Thank you.
Make an attempt to.
Work something out.
Work something out and report back to you then.
Very good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Anything else? Matt, anything?
No.
Mike, you have anything? That's for the prosecutor's office. John, anything else? Commissioners, okay. Let me, we do have, for discussion, we do have a resolution we would presumably put on for next week. This designates myself and Erin Harrison as the members of the Medina County Land Reutilization Corporation on the Board of Directors. Any questions or concerns, or did you want to jump in and?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, then we'll proceed next week for that purpose. Do you have anything, Kyle?
I do not.
Okay.
We did get an email late last week regarding some concerns about the city's development of the 69 courthouse.
Oh, yeah.
We're working, we just want to make sure that we respond with accurate information. So I imagine there'll be a response that goes out to that at some point this week. But ultimately, as we've talked about before, you know, we want to make sure once the plans, once the city has its plans developed, which, I don't think, well, I know nothing's been finalized there. You know, there could be some temporary impacts on the location of the law library in order to allow any remediation that needs to happen to happen in a way that's compliant and safe for all the occupants of the space. We don't know any of those eventualities yet because we don't have a finalized plan. But I'm going to at least communicate a little bit more formal of an update to the, to the group that was included in the initial distribution of the question. So just want to let you both know that with the help of Chris and others, we'll have a good response to that at some point here this week.
All right. Very good. Anything else?
No.
Okay, I did want to point out, and over, I'll just say for some period of time, occasionally, we get letters as commissioners regarding the election process and people that are very much concerned about the process of a voting that want us to go to all paper ballots and get rid of those doggone machines that nobody trusts. And I know the Secretary of State and Boards of Election have encouraged of individuals, if you have any questions about the process, volunteer, actually, you can work with it in a function and learn quite a bit more about the process. I know when Representative Sharon Ray was a Board of Elections member for a number of years, you had individuals, had concerns, and then would learn about the process. But today, at 2:30, the Board of Elections have a public test following their board meeting. So if you have any concerns today, those of you on Facebook, go there, see the test. Every election, there's a public test. Every election, it demonstrates the system, how it works, and it basically verifies its accuracy. And so the best way you can get confidence, I know with some people, is you got to see it to believe it. Please, go to there and talk to your election officials. The Board of Commissioners do not, do not stipulate as to the process followed. That's the Board of Elections. And the only other entity that has actually any control over that process would be number one, Secretary of State, and more importantly, is the General Assembly. General Assembly could modify it if they wanted to. So those that are advocating that the Commissioners will go to all paper ballots, that's not our role. And you need to be, I think, be much more informed and educated and see what's in place before I think you make the judgment of changing our system that has developed over the last number of years. It's not cheap. It's a lot more expensive than it used to be when I was a commissioner 20-plus years ago. But the accuracy, in my mind, is undoubtable. And I would say the authenticity of the process and the people that are involved are without question. So I would recommend that today, if you have a question, Board of Elections, 2:30, they have a public test. Please attend and become informed. That's all I have to say. We do have a request for executive session.
Move to convene an executive session to consider the sale of real property.
Second.
Move to second. Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks. Enjoy the sunshine and our early spring.